School Board to order. We have a quorum. I'm going to ask Tony Majors to lead us in the pledge.
My pledge is leaders. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under awards and recognitions, Brett Carr.
Thank you Chairman Gentry. Dr. Register, members of the board. We have many employees in our district that accept their jobs as a calling in serving the children of Davidson County. It's more than just a job, it's more than just their responsibilities. And John Williams and I would like to recognize Mike Law, who is a, right there, who is a director in the IT department, responsible for supervising and coordinating our technical support specialists who work in the schools, who keep all of the technology working for teachers. But Mike has taken on two jobs completely outside his area that have had significant success for the district. And I wanted to point them out and what he has done. One is the STRIDE program, which is our partnership with MTA where all high schoolers can ride MTA transportation at no cost to them. Mike designed the student IDs, the entire system, both technical and the design of the IDs, and made it work with MTA and our libraries and our cafeterias, and designed the system so that these student IDs can be printed at MTA and will work for all of our high school kids. So from nothing, from scratch, he's generated a district-wide system that now pulls information from our student database, including the students' pictures, and generates their pass, which is used in the library and the cafeteria for security and on MTA. And this is completely outside his area, but he took that on and designed it himself. And it's been, we've issued so far this year, including replacements, about 20,000 to 3,000 IDs for high school and MTA. It's amazing work. The second thing that I'd like to recognize, and at the same time I want to brag on our customer service center for a second. Mike came to me back in the fall and said, "I found this really cool piece of software." And it does online chats. And it has all kinds of backend metrics that you can keep up with what the chat was about and how many times you talk to different people. And he said, "We've got to have a good place, a good use for this somewhere in the district." And so we talked and said, "Okay, let's put it over in customer service and just see what happens." So we rolled it out, bought some licenses and rolled it out in customer service in December. And a couple of the numbers, we have had, we have increased our contacts in customer service, 2,400 contacts over the same period last year. And what this says is, we haven't just increased 2,400 people calling the center, we have opened up an entire new way for parents in the community to interact with MMPS that they didn't before. Some of the breakdowns in March, our customer service center conducted 1,657 chats. For the third quarter, January, February, and March, 5,853 online chats, real live online chats, which averages to 106 a day. Add that into our average phone call volume of 443 a day. We are doing a lot of communication with the community and with our parents. And it is a huge, exciting thing with the chats. Chats account now for about 18% of the contacts into customer service, and we just rolled it out in December. So it has been a really amazing thing. Mark Chamberlain gave me a couple of quotes, customer feedback from parents. "Thanks for the info, the customer service is helpful. It's good to provide this live chat." "Maria is wonderful, I appreciate her patience, and I really love this new chat option." Another message, "Awesome and quick customer service." So we're getting fantastically positive feedback off of a new program that was initiated by our Director of IT that doesn't have anything to do with customer service, but he thinks about, I didn't mean that that way. But he thinks about the big picture of how can we better serve our community. So we'd like to recognize Mike and give him-
A piece of paper.
-a piece of paper with his name on it that he can put in his office.
Thank you.
And have your picture taken.
Thank you. Good job. Give him something to take home, say it's here.
Next, we have the good news is, in those here Royals basketball team, Ms. Alyssa and Dr. Carr. It's okay.
My name is Angela Carr. I'm the Principal at Martin Luther King Junior Academic Magnet High School, and it's my privilege, honor, and pleasure to introduce the Class 2A State Champions, the Lady Royals, with Ms. Lady Brown King as head coach and Erin McIntyre, assistant coach. Ms. Brown King.
We brought the trophy today because we know that no matter where we go, everybody is so interested in the trophy. We went to the Capitol a couple of weeks ago, and there were people taking pictures with the trophy, so we brought it. If you guys would like to take a picture of it, we've taken a lot of pictures with it ourselves. But I would like to thank you for having us here today. I'm especially grateful that the team and I have been recognized by you guys today. I work for you, and they attend a school under your direction, and we want you to be proud of our accomplishments. As you know, Martin Luther King ranks very high for academics, so it's important to tell you guys that these girls are top of the line in classrooms before they ever step on the floor. Now, as a member of a basketball championship team, they rank high academically and athletically. More importantly, they are model citizens, personal persons of integrity, and are up and coming leaders. The decisions you have made here as board members have played a vital part in their success. Thank you for supporting athletics and the Magnet schools. As teachers, we are often asked to set goals for ourselves and our students. In November, I asked these girls to sit down and set some goals for themselves, and they named March 7th as their finish date. March 7th was the championship date. And so every time we went on the court, every time we went to practice, every time we did something together as a team, our goal was March 7th, and they accomplished their goals. We can all take pride in what has been accomplished at MLK, and if you've not personally visited us at MLK, I want to issue an invitation for you to come out and visit us and see all the wonderful things that we're doing there. Thank you.
It is public participation time. We now hear from people requesting to appear toward the board. I want to say this very slowly, you have three minutes. Please don't make me hit the gavel, and if you get three minutes or up, you'll hear that sound right there, we'll ask that you respectfully step away from the podium at that time. I'm going to call the first five people's names on the list, I'll ask that you come and line up at the podium. Anne and Stephen Selby, Susan Evans, Eric Huth, Shaska McBride, and Shaska Webb.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry. Dr. Gentry, members of the Board of Education. As you know, my name is Eric Huth, and I am president-elect of the Metropolitan Nashville Education Association. First, I'd like to thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you on the many challenges and opportunities that face us. We want the best for our students and community we serve, and we recognize you do too. Tonight, I join a coalition of parents, community groups, and educators who are passionate about creating schools that all Nashville students deserve. In the wake of the recent audit conducted this year, we do believe there is an opportunity to make our schools stronger. We should all be working together to find a coordinated approach that serves all children. We believe that the school board should embrace the opportunity to adopt tougher accountability and transparency standards to protect our students and taxpayers. Here's why. An independent local audit and a national study confirm that approval of new charters is forcing existing underfunded public schools to compete for the same tax dollars without proper checks and balances. There is also a growing concern among teachers and parents that we are not doing enough to ensure equal access to all of Nashville's public schools. That is why teachers support the independent standards outlined by the respected Annenberg Institute for Reform at Brown University. A mandate on transparency and equitable student policies ensures all students have fair access to schools they deserve. Annenberg also recommends all approved charter schools be fully funded by the state. Unfortunately, under our current system, Nashville taxpayers absorb the cost of state-approved charters already rejected here locally. The current budget includes $77.5 million for charter schools alone. We should require a rigorous financial review of all charter expansion on our public school system, a prudent step before approving more charters. Regardless of your position on charters, we need safeguards to restore the public's trust about how we run our schools. A recent survey of voters in Tennessee found that voters want accountability and transparency reforms, not charter expansion. A national study by the Center for Popular Democracy found charter school operators across the country were engaged in rampant abuses because they lack appropriate oversight and transparency guidelines. I believe a copy of their study and a letter from the CPD has also been submitted for your information. Let's prevent the waste before it starts. As we look for a new Director of Schools, we need a leader who is committed, who will commit the resources and oversight necessary for all our schools to be successful. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Anne, it's Anne, Stephen Selby, Susan Evans, Shaska McBride, or Shaska Webb here. Okay, in the next group, we have Latoya McCray, Shirley Bowers, Sharon Waters, Quintina Cincy, and Robert Leftwich.
Good evening. This is my present to all of you all because I know that you're balancing life and this, so, and I hope I do this group proud. I have been asked in respect of time to summarize the concerns of the Pearl Cone community. However, there are still a few people who want to speak on the agenda, but hopefully this will shave down the full 19. Parents held meetings with the principal, called, faxed, emailed, and at least two cases were unresponded to because the persons they reached out to stated they only heard from one parent, and thus questioned whether it was truly an issue. So we asked, "What is the quorum for concern to be responded to?" In November 2014, correspondence was sent out to 200 families, their graduation was to be Thursday, May 14, 2015, at 6:00 PM at Belmont. On May 17, 2015, students brought home correspondence that the time had been changed to 4:00 PM. Parents had to probe to find out that this was to accommodate 13 students who were competing in a state track meet. Parents immediately started asking questions, including but not limited to the following. Number one, why were no community meetings held with parents prior to the decision being made to change the time? Number two, why was this change exclusively communicated to parents through their students, leaving some parents still unaware of the time change? Number three, what is being done to refund families the cost of now incorrect graduation invitations, changing flights for those who it may be an option for due to the short notice, and time lost from work for parents who now have to miss all or part of their work day? Number four, what provisions are being made for MMPS employees who have relatives graduating regarding their workday being cut short, as I'm told some support staff do not have the option to leave their jobs early? Number five, what provisions are being made for families who have siblings that will now have to miss all or part of an instruction day to attend a 4 o'clock graduation? Number six, what provisions are being put in place so that the Pearl Cone community will not continue to be victim of actions that would not be tolerated in other communities? Number seven, to compensate, can the principal offer a blend of the 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock graduation, as the site as of today is still open until 10:00 PM? What is Plan B? For those of you on the board and in the audience that have children or are a part of the village needed to raise a child, imagine how you would feel to miss your child's graduation, a once-in-a-lifetime milestone because of lack of partnership and communication. I stand now for the 19-plus families that were prepared to speak tonight, and I ask that you do what you can to support the village in celebrating the graduation of all 200 of their students.
Thank you.
Hello.
State your name for me.
My name is Shaska McBride. I'm a parent of a student at Pearl Cone. I am the parent who initiated the emails to Ms. Stewart requesting a meeting to see what could we do to address a time change, or what could we do to at least accommodate the other 187 students? I had met with the Pearl Cone staff November 2014. I was given a list of dates and times when the graduate will take place, the time when every event will take place. I was also checked the website again to make sure that the time did not change, and it did state 6 o'clock. On March 17, which was the last day before spring break had started, my son gave me this packet right here saying that graduation would start at 4 o'clock. The school did not communicate with me stating the time was going to change or anything. What I did was, I spoke with Mrs. Stewart, that is the principal, I have all our emails, every contact that we have ever had right here, and I have plenty copies if you all would like to read through them as well, requesting times and dates, how could we meet? What was very disturbing is, you can't meet with me to address how you're going to give me to give you more money for senior trip and for senior week, but you can't meet with me to explain to me how can we accommodate the 187 students at 6 o'clock, but you want to have my son's graduation at 4 o'clock? I am a DCS worker. I have court at 1 o'clock on May 14, where a kid on my case, though I've been having since she was probably like 10 years old, she's going to finally get to go home, and this is one thing that she asked me, would I be at this hearing? I actually said yes, because I assumed at that time my son's graduation was going to be at 6 o'clock. Now, I'm in a situation where I have to pick my son over a child who I literally raised literally all her life, and it's very disturbing that no one is hearing me. All I'm being told is that 13 other kids have a track meet that's going to start at 5:30, and it's 9 out of 10, they're not going to be able to run until probably like 8 o'clock or 7 o'clock, but you're going to stop 187 kids' graduation for 13. I just find it very disturbing, and I'm about to cry now because it hurts so bad, that you're going to stop a graduation for 13, but you can't accommodate 187. And the way you told me was very ugly, that you're going to have a meeting with me last Tuesday to talk about Orlando's senior trip, and me to pay $215 by April 30 at 6 o'clock, but you can't hold a graduation at 6. It's just sad, and it's just really sad, and it's disturbing that they would actually do that for 13, but accommodate 187 kids. It's sad, and I have to get my kids out of school, I have a mother I have to pick up. I mean, there's no way I'm going to be able to do it. Thank you for listening.
You can bring your handouts if you still want to give them out. Yes. You give them to Ms. Frolin, she'll pass them around. Thank you. The next group, Neressa Leftwich, Alithia Humphrey, Laron DeWaller, Kenodra Odom, or Deion Gideon.
Okay. Good evening. I'm also a representative for the Pearl Cone. In fact, I am on the pack for a Pearl Cone cluster. And I have received several calls from concerned parents that was unable to attend tonight, so that's the reason why I tried to make, to attend. And the main concern is that a lot of parents have already made the invitations, already have out-of-town guests coming for flights that they can't get the refund, or it's going to cost them more money to change the flight. I am mainly concerned is that she didn't communicate with the parents to get as a majority. And I understand we try to accommodate the kids, but when you're looking at seniors who's trying to run track that's not affecting their grade compared to graduation, as we all know that is the main milestone in our kids' life before they turn 18. And if there's anything that we can do to help accommodate the 187 other families to have the graduation at 6:00 PM because of the concerns of family taking off from work, a lot of family members would not be able to attend because they don't get off work till 5:00, and to, their job is not going to accommodate them to take off for a relative, just like cousin or friend, to attend their graduation. Thank you.
Anyone else in that group? Jennifer Taylor, Mckure Jennings, Gary McBride, Latoya Westmore, Jennifer Moreland. Next grouping, John Boyd, Erin Palms, Mary Holden, Dylan Ross, TC Weber.
My name is Mary Holden, and I am a parent of a student at Granbury Elementary School, and I've been a public high school teacher for 14 years. Tonight, I speak to you as a concerned parent, educator, and taxpayer regarding charter schools. Charters work awfully hard to convince us that they are public schools, but when you take a closer look at the way they're set up, it is clear they are not public in any sense of the word. Charters are selective about their students, whereas public schools accept everyone. Charters are selective about how their parents will be involved, whereas our public schools welcome parents however they can be involved. Charters are very private about their business dealings, whereas public schools are transparent in all their decisions. Charters aren't accountable to a publicly-elected school board, and I don't know what they're doing with my tax dollars, whereas public schools are accountable, and I know and can see exactly where my tax dollars are going. If charters are going to continue to operate in this district, they need to be held accountable in the same way true public schools are. The voters are clear about what we want. We want strong community schools. We reject charter expansion. In fact, we don't need any more charters at this time. For our existing charters, we want and need charter reforms. Nashville charters are not accountable for the more than $70 million of taxpayer money given to them, and that is unacceptable. I believe in public accountability for charter schools, and approving standards such as those suggested by the Annenberg Institute is a necessary step. I want to know that before any new charter school is approved, an analysis will be conducted of the impact the charter will have on neighborhood public schools. I want to ensure that neighborhood public schools do not lose funding when new charter schools open in their area. A recent audit by the Metro Nashville Government found that charter expansion could force existing neighborhood schools to close because charters compete with underfunded public schools for our scarce taxpayer dollars, and that is not okay. I don't want that to happen in my neighborhood, or any neighborhood for that matter. I want to be certain that my daughter will have a rich experience at her neighborhood public school, not one that is being forced to cut back on teachers, programs, resources, or anything that will detract from the quality of her education just because competing charter schools are sucking out all the money from our neighborhood public schools. I am tired of all this competition. It is not right for our kids. I want to know this, why are we allowing this to happen? We are starving our public schools, calling them failing based solely on their test scores when our schools are not failing, and then watching as parents choose a charter instead. Why aren't we fighting for our neighborhood public schools? I just don't get it. I think this board needs to take a hard look at these questions, but let's start with this, no new charters and accountability for our existing charter schools. Thank you for your time.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Ross. I am with statewide organizing for community empowerment, also known as SOCOM. And I would like to talk a little bit about the Annenberg Report and standards mentioned by previous speakers. SOCOM is a nonprofit dedicated to social, economic, and environmental justice in Tennessee. We have approximately 2,000 members across the state and beyond, and we're here today to voice our support for stronger accountability and transparency policies for Nashville's public schools. As an organization that fights for justice, we understand how important public disclosure is to protect members of the public who do not have the resources to fight for their rights alone. We have reviewed the recommended standards by the Annenberg Institute. While we support all of the recommended, while we support all the recommendations for accountability and transparency, we believe those standards that focus on student equity policies are especially critical. The Annenberg standards provide strong protections for vulnerable and high-need student populations. These standards address fairness and equity issues for enrollment screenings, student retention, student discipline, and access to quality schools and facilities. The quality of access and service for all students is fundamental to public education, and it's a vital link that holds together our democracy. All schools receiving public funds should truly respect this quality of opportunity. We believe stronger transparency policies for all of Nashville's public schools will help school leaders make smarter decisions about school funding and resources. Such policies will also, such policies will also protect the rights of students, parents, teachers, and communities. We will be happy to work with the school board on this issue. Thank you for your consideration and your community service.
Thank you. Next.
My name is TC Weber, and I'm the father of a daughter at Tuscaloosa Elementary and a son to join her next year. You know, the past couple of years have seen us spending an inordinate amount of time on the discussion of the merits and drawbacks of charter schools. While many people may bemoan this fact, I think these conversations are essential to our children's future, and by extension, our city's future. Despite what the head of NMPS's Innovation Department, Dr. Coverstone, may say, the deliver- and transparency, we believe those standards that focus on student equity, student equity policies are especially critical. The Annenberg Standards provide strong protections for vulnerable and high-need student populations. These standards address fairness and equity issues for enrollment screenings, student retention, student discipline, and access to quality schools and facilities. The quality of access and service for all students is fundamental to public education, and it's a vital link that holds together our democracy. All schools receiving public funds should truly respect this quality of opportunity. We believe stronger transparency policies for all of Nashville's public schools will help school leaders make smarter decisions about school funding and resources. Such policies will also, such policies will also protect the rights of students, parents, teachers, and communities. We will be happy to work with the school board on this issue. Thank you for your consideration and your community service.
Thank you. Next.
My name is TC Weber, and I'm the father of a daughter at Tuscaloosa Elementary and a son to join her next year. You know, the past couple of years have seen us spending an inordinate amount of time on the discussion of the merits and drawbacks of charter schools. While many people may bemoan this fact, I think these conversations are essential to our children's future, and by extension, our city's future. Despite what the head of MNPS's Innovation Department, Dr. Coverstone, may say, the delivery method absolutely does matter. This is borne out by the two recent audits conducted on NBS. Both reached a conclusion that if we did not take steps to rein in unchecked charter school expansion, we were headed for financial insolvency. The problem in mine and many other eyes is that we have never had uniformed standards in which to access our schools. We call for universal high standards for our children, yet fail to adapt them for our schools. How can we truly evaluate our schools while some may backfill and others do not? When we cannot get accurate capacity numbers on our schools? When all schools do not participate in the same lottery process? When we cannot gather accurate financial information on all schools? A uniform standard would hold all schools accountable to our high expectations. My call is not for a particular set of standards, though the Annenberg Standards seem to fill the need. They call for, among other things, that traditional school districts and charter schools should collaborate to ensure a coordinated approach that serves all children. School governance should be representative and transparent. Charter schools should ensure equal access to interested students and prohibit practices that discourage enrollment or disproportionately push out enrollment students. Charter school discipline policy should be fair and transparent. All students deserve equitable and adequate school facilities. Districts and charter schools should collaborate to ensure facility arrangements do not disadvantage students in either section. Online charter schools should be better regulated for quality, transparency, and the protection of student data. Monitoring and oversight of charter schools are critical to protect the public interest, and they should be strong and state-funded. There may be room to add to this list, but these are a good place to start. I urge you board members to keep the conversation going, but to do it in a more transparent and equitable manner. I believe all schools are capable of meeting these standards. And I'd like to take one second also and say the blue ribbon teachers that was released yesterday, we should give them all a tip of hat, but we should also give a high five to all our teachers in Metro. All of them work very, very hard, and we should represent and thank all of them, not just the ones that we specially designate as being special. They're all special. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next group. Dick Williams, Stephen Henry, Amanda Cale, and Mindy Winningham.
Members of the board, Dr. Register, good afternoon. My name is Stephen Henry, and I'm a middle school teacher with 29 years of service to the district, and I've served the last four as the president of the Metropolitan Nashville Education Association. Let me first begin by thanking you for the work that you do to support Nashville's students and teachers. To honor your work, you received MNEA's 2013 Friend of Education Award. And last year, you received TEA's 2014 Friend of Education Award in recognition of your positive impact on education across the state. Tonight, MNEA, Nashville's teachers, along with several parent and community organizations, ask that you continue to lead by example by adopting the Annenberg Standards on public accountability for charter schools. On Sunday, Dr. Alan Coverstone, a colleague of mine and a former board member, co-authored, authored op-ed for The Tennessean, and I'd like to thank him for providing the framework for my remarks tonight and to highlight several of the key points that he made in the article. First, he challenged us to have a different conversation about public education and focus our energy on school quality. This is exactly the purpose behind the Annenberg Standards. He shared a concern for greater academic opportunity and stronger academic outcomes for our students, and the need for a rigorous application of academic performance expectations for charter schools. And what better way to do that than by adopting the high standards and best practices proposed by a nationally-respected institution like Annenberg. Like you, he understands the need for rigorous expectations for all of the district's investments, and it's critical that the district has policies and practices like Annenberg's in place to do just that. I also agree with his assertion that the people of Nashville deserve an honest conversation about how well their children are being served, and this transparency and accountability is exactly in line with the thoughts of local voters. A recent poll by the Center for Popular Democracy tells us that voters overwhelmingly reject choice and charter expansion, and instead favor charter school reforms like those proposed by Annenberg that are aimed at strengthening transparency and accountability, teacher training, anti-fraud measures, and equity policies for high-need students. Our students deserve high standards. Our parents, along with the Nashville community, deserve policies that provide transparency and accountability with how their tax dollars are spent. We do need a different conversation about public education, one that focuses on school quality, and one that can begin with the adoption of the Annenberg Standards on public accountability for charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Amanda Cale. I am an MNPS middle school teacher. I teach beginning-level EL students, grades 5 through 8, and I'm here to talk about the Annenberg Standards as well, which call for greater accountability for charter schools and why I support them. Also, I will address why I want to encourage the school board to adopt them. Let me begin by saying that I understand why some parents want charter schools. It's particularly those parents whose children attend what they believe are failing schools. We all want what's best for our children. However, many of those failing public schools are like mine. We overwhelmingly serve students with the highest needs. We have close to 100% free and reduced lunch, significant percentages of students with disabilities, as well as students who are just learning English as a new language. Some of our students have missed many years of schooling previously due to violence in their own countries. These are not excuses for poor test scores. They are real, live human beings who have had to struggle more than most of us can imagine. Sorry. If anything, we need to, we need more support for public schools, not less. If we want schools like mine to succeed, sorry. If we want schools like mine to succeed, they need more support. My concern is that we are building up charter schools by tearing down public schools. There is only one pot of money for education, and when we give money to charters, we necessarily take it from public schools. And to top it off, there seems to be problems in accountability for charter schools and their finances. Charter schools promise a release from the burdens of public school bureaucracy, supposedly freeing educators to be innovative in their approach and method. However, what they are also free of is the oversight to make sure they are adequately serving all students, and that they are using our public tax dollars appropriately and effectively. We have already seen the results of the state 2013 fiscal audit, which found that the ASD inappropriately charged school improvement grants programs and failed to adequately review invoices paid to charter management organizations to the tune of nearly $200,000. Therefore, it is of the utmost importance that this board be proactive in putting in place standards which will ensure proper oversight to our public tax dollars as they are used for charter schools. This includes not only drafting the appropriate policies and procedures, but also requiring charter schools to employ adequate personnel to ensure this oversight. The audit that I cited earlier faulted a high turnover rate at ASD, as well as a lack of trained employees who could take over the oversight of the finances in question. Having someone who is adequately trained to keep track of the finances is not red tape. It's what stops negligence, waste, and in worst-case scenarios, fraud. In fact, this is one case where I feel like my counterparts in the charter schools will agree with me. After all, a reputation of fairness and accountability will only help charter schools. The Annenberg Standards, which come from the Annenberg Institute for School Reform at Brown University, are a good place to start.
Thank you, Ms. Cale. Thank you very much.
And I have the reports here.
You can put it on, and Ms. Frohman will pass them. Thank you.
My name is Melinda Winningham. I've been an educator for 28 years, 17 in Metro, and 13 of those years at Gilidsville Elementary School. And I've had the privilege of teaching hundreds of wonderful students alongside an outstanding faculty and staff. I love what I do. I love the children I teach and the community I serve, Nashville. I would first like to thank you all for your public service and leadership in helping shape Nashville's public schools. Together as educators, parents, and community leaders, we have one of the most important jobs in the city. But in these changing times and looking forward, we can and must do better. From a teacher's perspective, I would like to address the important issues of accountability and transparency of our public charter schools. And believe me, as a Tennessee teacher, I know transparency and accountability. The foundation of the public school system is that every child in every community, regardless of race, gender, religion, socioeconomic standing, or academic ability, will have access to quality education. I've often said that both the pros and the cons of public schools can be summed up in one statement. Welcome to public schools. We take everybody. While this can create a great challenge, it's also a great equalizer. For the past few years, at various times during the school year, I have personally received new and returning students from private charter schools. Whether parents chose to remove their child, the family was made to leave, or a charter was closed, it was ultimately a difficult and sometimes traumatic experience for the students. Adopting the Annenberg Standards would be a huge step forward for MNPS in understanding issues with enrollment, screening, equitable services, and discipline policies as they apply to charters. In addition, the school system could provide data and information to families which would allow them to make informed decisions for their children while developing clear policy to protect all of our students. Sadly, it is a reality that some students do not have an adult at home willing or capable, for whatever reason, to be an advocate for them. It is easy to say that all students deserve to achieve their full academic potential. It takes the city to make it happen. Every day in so many ways, the faculty and staff in my school are accountable and transparent. As a taxpayer and a teacher in a school with a poverty level around 78%, I know how precious every dollar is to my students. Each year, I must turn in receipts in a sealed and signed envelope, the $200 for my BEP money. So it seems that it should follow that any school spending taxpayer dollars should be required to fully disclose its operations and expenditures to the public, the school board, and the media. Teachers are held to high standards. The schools should be too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I have.
You have a handout?
Mm-hmm.
You have a handout? All right. Thank you all. We're moving into governance issues. Are there any adjustments to the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have to pull item M from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, removing item M. Any other modifications to the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Frohman? I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Kim.
All right. A, recommended approval of change order number one for DuPont-Tylor Middle School, ADA Upgrades Edwards Construction LLC. B, recommended approval of supplement number one for Ruby Major Elementary School Editions, Gilbert McLaughlin, Casella Architects. C, recommended approval of request number one for purchase of cafeteria tables for Stratford-Stem Magnet High School, Amtap Direct. D, recommended approval of request number four for district-wide roof repairs, Percy Priest Elementary School, Roofing Services and Solutions LLC. E, recommended approval of request number five for district-wide roof repairs, Hillwood High School, Roofing Services and Solutions LLC. F, recommended approval of request number six for prototypical pre-kindergarten and kindergarten playgrounds at various schools, Smith Springs Elementary School, Custom Recreation. G, recommended approval of request number seven for prototypical pre-kindergarten and kindergarten playgrounds, Henry Maxwell Elementary School Edition, Custom Recreation. H, recommended approval of request number one for lead consultation for New Overton Cluster Elementary School, Hastings Architecture Associates. I, recommended approval of request number two for lead consultation for Tuscaloosa Elementary School Replacement, Hastings Architecture Associates. J, recommended approval of revision to request number 22 for district-wide maintenance, repairs, and general construction, New Overton Cluster Elementary School, Saveling Constructors LLC. K, awarding of purchases and contracts. One, Fast Security Services, Gertmann and Associates. Two, Buck Institute. Three, CDW Government LLC. Four, Dell Marketing LP. Five, Equipment Finders Incorporated. Six, Fred J. Miller Incorporated. Seven, LPS Integration Systems Incorporated. Eight, Midcontinent Research, Education, and Learning, McRell. Nine, Motorola Solutions. Ten, SNH Computers Incorporated. Eleven, Southern Heating and Cooling Incorporated. Twelve, Taylor Music. Thirteen, Tyler Technology Incorporated. Fourteen, Washington Music Center. Fifteen, West Music. L, resolution to participate in the interlocal purchasing system, TIPS. N, legal settlement claim, 11. C for 324 for $25,000. Zero, oh, sorry. Oh, legal settlement claim, C 32743 for $10,850. And P, recommended approval of request for compulsory attendance waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. You've heard the consent agendas are motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agendas, Reg.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any more discussion? Okay, I guess I got that backwards, Judge. Yeah. Anyone opposed? All right, good. Thank you. Consent agenda. Dr. Brandon?
Yes. On item M, in light of a recent request from Mr. Wade's attorney, and based on the recommendation of our legal counsel, I've moved to defer this item to another day.
Okay.
And Ms. Harky is in the audience, and she can give any further explanation if necessary.
So you're making a formal motion to defer?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Anyone have any questions? All right. All in favor of deferring item M to a later agenda item? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Item number two. Ms. Shepherd.
Earlier, we had our Budget and Finance Committee meeting for our operations budget for 20, for the school year 2015-16. The budget was approved unanimously, so I would entertain a motion on the Board floor to approve the budget.
Motion to approve 2015-16 full-year budget request.
Thank you, Mr. Pink. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Any more discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? I just have it. Thank you so much, Ms. Shepherd. This has been great. Really good, really good. Good questions, and I appreciate everybody that's been engaged in that, in that process. We're going to move item number three until after Dr. Register gives his update on the meeting with Governor Haslam and urban school directors.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, on March 23rd, Governor Haslam, Chief of Staff Mark Caden, Commissioner of Education McQueen met with, at our request, met with the four directors of schools from Shelby County, Hamilton County, Knox County, and here MNPS, to discuss our concerns about increasing funding for Tennessee schools. We, it was a positive meeting. We met with the governor. The governor listened to our concerns, asked a number of questions, asked what could be done in the short term to help, or what we would recommend in taking steps going forward to better fund public education in Tennessee. He was special, he had, he placed special emphasis on successfully improving student performance in Tennessee and using funding to do that. As I said earlier, the governor was receptive and understanding specifics that we talked about, the four directors talked about, and we had met previously to, just before the meeting with the governor, to talk about what, what would be to ask, what would we, what would we look for. And the four directors agreed that some of the real problems that we had with adequately funding public education in the state was, was the BEP formula and the way it addressed average teacher salary cost, which is unrealistic, the way it's unrealistically low, the way the BEP funds average teacher costs now. And we also discussed health benefits or health costs. As you know, the state funds 10, 10 months of health insurance, and locals, local districts have to make up the other 2%. We, the four superintendents agreed that we would look at next steps and make an ask that would benefits all, benefit all school systems in the state of Tennessee, to not create winners and losers, to not have some districts lose at the, for the sake of others gaining in the state. And these two requests would do that. The tide would rise, if you will, or the funding level would rise for all systems in the state. The governor was also quick to say that it was, it was not reasonable to expect a move all the way, a giant step all the way to adequacy this year. His budget had already been presented at the time, but, but that he His budget had already been presented at the time, but that he would consider our issues. And he also said that he would like to do a follow-up meeting after this legislative session with the four of us. And at that time, I said, well, it'll have to be quick because my drop-dead date's June 30th. And he smiled about that and said, yes, it will be after the legislative session. So we expect a follow-up meeting and conversation with the governor at that time. We, I feel like, and these are my, these are my own sentiments, my own feelings about this, about the meeting, I feel like the governor listened to us. I think the commissioner listened to us, and there's an example of that. The governor, in making a supplemental request to the budget, put some recurring additional funds in the budget this year, and that was in round figures, $30 million increase for recurring health benefits. I think he listened to us and recognized the fact that that would make a difference. This year, I'll go on to say this, we have increased, increases in the governor's recommendation for the budget of $100 million to apply to teacher salaries, to salary increases, the $30 million in recurring health benefits that were added after our visit, and a $44 million to fund the BEP formula. And the other thing I'd say specifically about Nashville and Shelby County is that after the governor had decided not to seek pre-K funding from the U.S. Department of Education, we requested that he reconsider, for the state of Tennessee, we asked that he reconsider that and apply for that federal funding for Shelby County and for Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. And he agreed to do that, and I think at some political risk, but he agreed to do that. And as a result of that, we did receive $67 million in pre-K funding and early childhood funding for Metropolitan Nashville and for Shelby County. And that money's split 50/50, so we actually are recipients of 33 million. I think that I was pleased with the outcome. I don't think we could have expected to get more at this time, and I look forward to a follow-up with the governor. Madam Chair, that concludes the report.
Thank you. We'll go back to item number three from the action items. Ms. Brode?
All right, I will make the motion, and then I have a few comments. I move that we engage independent legal counsel to advise the board regarding BEP litigation.
I second.
Okay. You've heard the motion, it's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Could I?
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I want to say that there is legal authority for this action. Tennessee Code Annotated Section 49, 2203B5 authorizes this action by the board. It provides as follows: The local Board of Education has the power to employ legal counsel to advise or represent the board. As I said at the last meeting, MNPS may have legal interests that differ from those of other districts involved in the lawsuit, and we may need to intervene in the lawsuit to ensure that our students and teachers are protected. Again, engaging legal counsel does not preclude us from further discussions with the state. I think that we need legal advice from an attorney who specializes in this area of the law. I think it would also be helpful to gain a national perspective on adequacy lawsuits. And so John Borkowski would be a reasonable selection because he's already engaged extensively with the board in discussion of this particular issue. And I also am open to engaging local counsel as well. Corey Harkey has done an excellent job representing us, and she could also be involved in the discussion if the board so desires. So, that's my motion.
Any other comments? Ms. Pierce?
It might be more, it might even just be more for you, Amy, but we've already paid, this is prior to my time, about $110,000 to John Borkowski for the legal opinion. What additional information? Is that because that opinion was for all class, and you're saying we might have independent issues? Or what exactly are we seeking from John Borkowski?
Well, I think the circumstances have changed since we had discussions with Borkowski. Obviously, lawsuits have been filed, and I think the discussions that we would have at this point would be more specific.
Okay, and then I think, I think in total on BEP legal counsel, this board has spent $163,000. So just, do you have a, obviously, we know his rate around that much, so you're proposing, is there a cap to your proposal?
No, I'm really open to whatever discussion you want to have about that, but I do think that because he's already done a lot of work on this issue, that it would cut down some of the time, you know, that other attorneys might need to get up to speed on the questions.
And then I have one other question. When you said this should not preclude further discussions with the state, are you meaning with Dr. Rosier and the governor?
Right.
Do you find that to be true, Dr. Rosier? I know with--
I'm sorry, do I find what to be true?
Is that, is that true? If, would attorneys not be speaking to each other then? If the governor and Speaker Harwell have been named in a suit, do they--
She's not talking about a suit. I'm not asking to file a lawsuit.
She's not asking to file a suit. She's asking to get legal counsel to have a discussion with the board to consider what options are--
Got it, got it. So, okay. But you are also okay with just using most of your legal, or?
Well, in the past, we have, because of some potential conflicts of interest, we have engaged independent counsel on certain issues, and I think this would be an appropriate issue to engage outside counsel. If you want to talk about other options, I think just, I've mentioned Borowski because he's, like I said, he's already done a lot of work on this, and it would make sense to me for him to have a meeting with us and give us advice at this particular point in the proceedings.
Okay, I'm just having more trouble, I guess, with the budget aspect of it. We just passed the large budget. We did not include any items for this type of service. We've already spent $163,000, potentially looking at another.
Well, I will say that when, so the reason all this came about is when I started on the board, we had some issues around the Great Hearts case, where we had legal counsel that had some potential conflicts of interest. And so we sort of agreed that we would be using metro counsel for certain, I mean, metro legal for certain, you know, issues, the issues that are brought to us pretty regularly as a board, and that we would consider looking at independent counsel for other matters. And so that's what I'm proposing in this particular situation.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out what we would gain from the, what the legal opinion he's already issued.
Because it's a different, we're at a different stage in the proceedings.
Ms. Pinkston?
John Borowski has not issued a legal opinion about the constitutionality of adequacy in the BEP. He looked at a very narrow legal question that Dr. Register asked him to look at, which was the unconstitutionality of the state charter law. So that's a different issue. I want to spend a minute and deconstruct some of this rose-colored glasses view of this conversation with the governor. I mean, you know, it stood to hear Dr. Rich to put it, you know, we should be saluting smartly and thanking him for all the favors that he's doing us, and that's just not true. The $44 million that's in the governor's budget to, as Dr. Rich said, fully fund the BEP does not fully fund the BEP. About 500 million would fully fund the BEP. What they have done is made a 2 percent inflationary adjustment. Meanwhile, we do 3 percent inflation locally. So that's not fully funded the BEP. This concept that he's doing us a favor by allowing the state to serve as a pass-through mechanism for federal pre-K dollars is absurd. I mean, are we supposed to thank him for allowing us to use federal dollars for universal meals? I just don't, I don't get this. So, you know, I think in a budget of $800 million, I think we can find enough money to obtain legal representation, to make sure that we are represented in this conversation. The BEP is fundamentally a legal conversation. This is a formula that was born out of 30 years of case law. So I support the motion.
Sure. Ms. Shepherd?
I am encouraged with Governor Haslam's suggested increase in covering the medical insurance premiums for our teachers. It is a step in the right direction, but is it enough? Not yet, no. Additionally, appointing Dr. McQueen as our new Commissioner of Education is another right step in the, is a step in the right direction. Yesterday, I attended a TSB workshop entitled Vision for Excellence, and I was examining the percentage rates each school district in the state of Tennessee fund their local districts. Davidson County is at 58 percent, is the third highest in the entire, in the entire state of Tennessee, even ahead of Williamson County. So how is this possible when we have a 72 percent rate of economically disadvantaged students in metro? We are, having said that, we are thick in the process of hiring a new director of schools, and we have to get this decision right. It's not about the adults in the room. If we don't get it right, it's about the students in those seats if we don't get this decision right. Funding our, fully funding our schools is a moral and ethical thing to do. It's a no-brainer. We all agree on that. Governor Haslam made a comment that he didn't think that filing a lawsuit was going in the right direction. All right, then tell us what is the right direction. Meet us halfway, or meet us all the way and fully fund our schools. Right now, personally, I don't think it's the right time to be seeking legal opinions on funding. Right now is the time to be seeking the best of the best for a new director of schools. I can't support this decision right now, but next fall might be a different story. When we have our new director of schools, and we know what our governor and legislature is going to be doing. We already have a legal opinion. We got a legal opinion with John Borowski. I think we need to rest on, rest on that and have a wait-and-see attitude and do what we need to be doing right now for our students, and that's hiring the best director of schools we can find.
Anyone else?
Can I just have a question?
You get one more turn. Use it wisely. Ms. Brode?
Well, I will say that we have not gotten any legal advice on what is happening in this particular lawsuit and how it would affect us and how it would affect the teachers. And as Mr. Pinkston pointed out, we have had discussions about related issues, but not exactly this issue. And I think we owe it, you know, to the district and to our teachers and our students to at least fully understand from a legal perspective, you know, the best action, the best course of action for the district. That's not filing a lawsuit. I think a lawsuit is a very different thing, but I think that it, you know, we are responsible for being fully informed as we move forward, and that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Anyone else?
I'll just say that BEP 2.0 was passed when will?
2007.
2007. And then 2008, 2009 came, and we had a fall of the stock market, and the state was in jeopardy and didn't have the resources to fully fund the BEP 2.0. Many years have passed now since then, and our economy has gotten much better, yet we haven't seen the state step out and do the right thing to take care of the children that we represent in this district. So I am 100 percent in favor of getting a legal opinion from an outside source and someone like Borowski, who has worked with us and knows us. And so the amount of time that he can come to a decision would be less than if we started from scratch.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
I would only add, I would add, you know, the only difference between now and then, when the BEP 2.0 was first put in place, is the governor proposed and the legislature approved a tripling of the tobacco tax to raise $250 million as a down payment on it. Then the recession happened. And, but what you're not hearing right now is any conversation either among the governor or in the legislature about actually finding new revenue. So it's one thing to, if we trust the governor, which I think is a question mark, but even if he were to make a good faith effort to do that, what are the chances that this legislature, the Guns &amp; Parks Legislature, the vouchers legislature, the whatever else you want to call it legislature, what's, what are the chances that they're actually going to step forward and provide the funding? I think it's very unlikely, and because they're against public education. So I don't see what it hurts to get legal advice. There are seven other districts, probably more very soon, that are going to be in court. I think at some point, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, you know, we can either be at the table in conversations, whether or not we're party to a suit or not, or we can be on the menu. Because if our interests, our students' interests aren't represented, if we don't have the best information to navigate on, then I think we are doing a disservice to them.
You writing in?
I'm just clarifying something between Ms. Brode and Mr. Pinkston. So I'm understanding that you want the legal opinion because things have changed in the situation with the lawsuit. You are saying we don't have a Borowski opinion on adequacy.
Not that I've seen.
What is this, proposal to draft educational adequacy complaint for the Coalition of Large Area Schools that's by John Borowski?
Never seen it.
It was emailed while that.
It looks like that's a, if I look at the front page correctly, it's a proposal, it's not--
But it's pretty detailed.
Well.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just clarifying the reason why. I'm wondering if, if we need, what more we're going to learn from Mr. Borowski when he's provided a pretty detailed analysis here.
You know, what, when is that? What's the date on that?
It was just January 2015.
Okay, well, last month, in May 2015, seven districts filed a complaint in chance record that makes a certain set of legal arguments. And I'm not a lawyer, you're not a lawyer, but I'd like to hear from a lawyer on what, if anything, those mean to us.
I was just clarifying that you had said this has not been done. Ms. Brode was saying the situation has changed. I was just trying to make sure--
Yeah, he had all the information. That's a proposal. As I look at it, it's not an opinion, so there isn't an opinion.
But it, I mean--
And what she's saying is correct, that things have changed. There's been massive litigation.
Okay, guys, let's get back to the motion. So is there anyone that wants to speak to the motion?
Can I, can I answer the question?
I think you've answered it two times.
I'm not arguing. I'm just answering the question. I think when you engage in legal counsel, part of it, I mean, you can, I don't know what this is, and I'm sure we can reference that, but part of it is you have a discussion with the lawyer about, you know, the circumstances and, and, you know, there are a lot, when you're talking with the lawyer, you know, they don't say, you do X. They say, you have a discussion about, you know, the legal consequences of various, various actions, and what the law is, and, you know, how the particular laws--
We can do that much more legally.
Well, I mean, that's a discussion we can have, but I, but I do think we need counsel. So my motion is that we hire independent counsel.
Motion's been restated, it's already been seconded. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of seeking outside legal counsel regarding the BEP formula suit that is currently in play, of the BEP funding issue? I'll leave it at that. Okay, say aye.
Aye.
I need some hands here. One, two, three, four. Okay, you got four, four. All opposed? I need to see hands. Two, three, four, five. Motion fails. All right. Committee reports. Well, actually, you know what? No. I do have a statement to make. So I just want to clarify, well, and this is an opinion, and I have had conversations with individuals around the state regarding the situation. And Mr. Pinkston alluded to it in his comments, that the BEP formula that we have today is a result of, what, 30-plus years of litigation from the small school systems. So we now have a formula that by the state's own admission has never, I say that with a capital N and other letters that are in there before I misspell it, or all capitalized as well, has never been funded at full capacity to the benefit of all the school systems. And according to, in accordance with the data that Ms. Shepherd has shared, that the large school systems tend to carry a larger portion of what the state should be funding. But we carry that burden. We carry that dollar amount, tax dollars, out of our budgets to cover a formula created by the state that says, by their own calculations, what it is we should be allocated to educate, pay, assess, provide infrastructure, all the things that are going to determining the appropriate environment for adequately educating kids. But we have a formula that, again, the state's own committee that gets together and sends a note every year that says, nope, still not fully funded, and we move on. So I do understand that even if the motion was to sue, which to be very clear, that was not the motion, if the motion was to sue, it is highly unlikely that some money's going to mysteriously appear, right? Because if it took 30 years to get there, it won't mysteriously appear overnight. I think this is about, more than anything, taking a position and taking a stand, about what we believe is the right thing to do. The other part of that is regardless of, even if we, if the lawsuit goes forward and everybody who's suing wins, the most a judge is going to be able to say is, yes, the state has to fully fund the BEP. They're not going to tell a dollar amount, they're not going to tell them where to get the money from. The state still has to-- The state still has to put forth that effort. So the other point that was made is the legislature still has to figure out a way to find those funds and come up with a strategy for funding it. But this is about what we talk about a lot around this table, doing the right thing for kids and teachers. So I don't know if it'll come up again. I'm sure we will all be closely monitoring what's going on here, but do understand that without taking any action, nothing will happen. And the sad part about it is, is Davidson County carries a lot of weight. We do. We carry a lot of weight. And yeah, if the suits that are already out there turn out in favor and in three or four years, funding actually maximizes, we'll benefit. We'll benefit by having done nothing, or we'll benefit by bringing some more credibility to the discussion. So I will say that I'm kind of disappointed, really disappointed, that we're not even willing to discuss what our options are. Nobody's asking to sue at this point, but just to understand and get better informed and better educated equally about what the current status is of the BEP funding formula, what the current status is in the climate, in the legislature, and appetite for doing what we believe is the right thing to do for the students. It was just a request for a conversation, so I...
Can we still have that though?
Can we still have what?
The conversation with legal.
You said you didn't want to.
No, with outside counsel.
Well, you can put up another motion and say you want to have it. If there's a different motion, then fine.
I think I'm just pointing out that the motion was outside counsel.
Yeah. So if that's the problem, is there a different motion?
But she also mentioned having our legal counsel...
That wasn't the motion. The motion was to seek outside counsel. If that was the problem with the motion, my question is, is there another motion on the table?
Metro Legal will ask...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I move.
Yep. Hold on. Mr. Pinkston, go ahead.
I think, and will ask Ms. Harkey to speak to this, but I think one of the first things that Metro Legal will tell you is that there's nobody in Metro Legal who specializes in the BEP and state constitutional funding law. It's kind of like being a doctor. There are specialties, and it's not a problem with Metro Legal. They need to be at the table in every legal discussion as counsel or co-counsel. But I bet you that one of their first recommendations is going to be, this is not an area of expertise for us, so we're going to have to seek expertise elsewhere, but I'll, I won't speak for them.
So it sounds like the question to me is really whether or not Metro Legal has expertise in this area. I mean, I agree that there is no specific attorney with Metro Legal that is an expert in BEP litigation or BEP funding and the constitutionality thereof. I, I don't know how many attorneys in Tennessee or across the nation are experts in BEP litigation funding, but I, I do agree that there is no one attorney at Metro Legal that specializes in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harkey.
May I renew my motion or bring it up at the next meeting?
You certainly may. I move that we...
You can bring that. You have to bring it.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
I will again renew my motion to hire outside legal counsel to advise us regarding the BEP litigation because the law and legal discussions are fluid and we, as a board, should be informed in our decision-making.
Thank you. Committee reports. Ms. Shepherd.
All right. The members of class meet every, well, we meet, we have a conference call every Friday morning at nine AM to discuss what's going on in the legislature, and of course, they're trying to wind down, so there are lots of topics of conversation. So some of the bills that have died this session is a bill that would allow for, for-profit charter operators to do business in Tennessee, a bill that would allow charter schools to set admission standards like an academic magnet school, and a new version of the parent trigger law, which will not be heard this year. Some of the other bills that we're, that class is watching for us, in fact, to just today at 4:30, the IEP voucher bill was, was discussed, and they're going to delay implementation until 2016, but they also amended it to limit it to those students with severe disabilities such as blindness, deafness, severe autism, severe disabilities. And so that was delayed implementation until 2016. The main voucher bill is the one that has been proposed in previous years. Both bills are now, both voucher bills are now in the budget subcommittee. The ASD expansion bill is also before the House Finance Committee today. This bill would enable the ASD to enroll students from outside of the ASD, up to 25% of their student population. The Guns and Parks bill also was heard today. They took out the provision of having guns in the state Capitol that was recommended by Sandra Yorba. They are grandfathering in some certain elements of that bill. Keep in mind that we have 50 schools in Metro, national public schools, that share space with parks. So this really has gotten a good bit of attention and rightly so, because there, if you haven't already seen it, you need to check out the interview that was done with a, with a representative from Williamson County when he was questioned about allowing guns in parks. Some of his answers were just startling when he was asked about what happens when a child is accidentally shot at a school because someone at a park had a gun. It's inexcusable for me, in my personal opinion, that a state representative would have an opinion that it would be an act of God that that child would get shot. That is inexcusable. So we really need to keep a keen eye on these bills that will affect especially our youngest and most, our youngest children and our faculty and staff at these schools. I'm sorry, it's a topic I get passionate about. I'm done.
No, you're not.
Oh, okay. Budget and finance. Sorry. Okay, so we just approved our budget, both in committee and on the board floor. We do have a mayor's budget hearing meeting this coming Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the media room at the courthouse. I would encourage all my colleagues to come to that meeting. And then the Metro Council budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, June the 8th at 4:30 in council chambers. And at this point, I will give notice that I am bringing a resolution to our next board meeting on the 20, on the 30th of April to adopt the Anna Berg Sanders. Now I'm done.
All right. Community engagement, Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you. Community engagement committee meeting, excuse me, the community engagement committee held its monthly meeting on Monday, April 6th. We took up three items for discussion. The first one was discussion around public engagement around the director search, specifically engaging the next steps toward engaging, I should say, the coalition of organizations that have stepped forward asking for a voice in the process, and it was a robust dialogue with those groups as well as representatives of the parent advisory council. One of the key takeaways there was regardless of what happens around the director search, that the organizations that have come to the table are probably the right organizations to constitute a community advisory task force to advise the committee on a going-forward basis on all of the different matters that will be taken up in the community engagement committees, meetings, meetings in the future. So that was a good, good outcome. We'll have more voices and more, more community engagement in the community engagement committee.
How about that?
I know. The, the other thing that we heard from was from Ms. Lacey and her, her team on their strategic communications plan. We got, you know, partially through that presentation, and we'll continue that at the next community engagement committee meeting, which will be on Monday, May 4th, at 4:00 PM Central, Monday, May 4th, at 4:00 PM Central, at the Martin Professional Development Center, 2400 Fairfax Avenue in Nashville, Tennessee.
How do you get all the ominous sound effects when you're... Wait for thunder now.
Just my magnetism.
I was going to say that. Naming of schools Dr. Kiyat, what's the deal? Naming of schools Dr. Brennan?
Yes. Within your packets, you have a proposal from the principal of IT Cresswell School. This, I'm informing you because of the, the need that they see to make the name more concise and also to keep it from appearing in the document once I receive the proposal. We reached out to Carol Cresswell, the daughter of IT Cresswell, and she is very much in favor of this modification as it really, it will end up being Cresswell Middle Prep School of the Arts, and they want to use this on their brand to prepare for next year. So the committee will meet on April 30th at 4:00 PM, especially because we don't know if we'll have any other executive session. So 4:00 PM on the 30th, and we hope to bring a recommendation, right here in the conference room. We hope to bring this on that...
Yes, thank you. You took your mic. That's why I'm...
...and learning committee at March 31st is expecting to be heard for the suitcase assessment. She shared information about professional testing, characteristics that create characteristics of students that create success. And who is successful in science. Committee members generated students' characteristics and then tagged in the return, and rise to a number of definitions. Although achievement test scores are used in a variety of high school situations, student success is much broader than a single test score. They just are strategic in terms of student success academically, socially, and emotionally. And achieving is a power to make decisions that affect their personal lives and society in general. Students who engage in successful in their work are driven by four essential goals, each of which satisfies a particular human need. Success is the need for mastery. Curiosity is the need for understanding. Ocitality is the need for... Are we using for... I would see a board... It's more than just funding. If you put a place level in elementary school, their chances of success are exponentially enhanced.
Yes, I just want, on March 27th, I have the opportunity to present the National School of Work Association Convention, which is your national... Pre-referent representative is the other, being the pre-referent group researcher in Action Center, is a national advocate, and the other from the Center on Budget Policy priorities in Washington. And I was asked to talk specifically around board advocacy about this universal meals issue, and I was proud to report to them, and I gave all the credit to our management team, including Dr. Regis, and excuse the team, that our average daily participation in breakfast has increased. Personally, lunch participation is up as well, 21%, is that right, Fred? And the lunch participation rate is now at 76% overall and 46% of breakfast. That's, you know, thousands upon thousands upon thousands of kids who are eating two squares a day who might not have been previously. So congratulations again. I don't think we can talk about that enough because it's rapid improvement, so thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful program that we have run, the NASA program. We had that on Monday, March 30th, and it showcased such a big program that NASA is. And Maryelle LeBeckow is the NASA representative, because of a great, outstanding job, so kudos to her. The National Air Chamber of Commerce and Women of McDonald organized a wonderful VIP tour at Dupont Hadley Middle Prep on Wednesday, April 1st. It was a great tour. I witnessed fifth graders playing bridge, and I don't even know how to play bridge, seventh graders working on an interactive blog with their teacher, and lots of great learning going on in those classrooms. They have a coral program for the first time in several years. They're really good. The Tennessee Ed reported in Hillsborough PTS, a great job organizing that mayoral forum at Hillsborough High School, but the Overton High School had not a mayoral forum in the morning. It was very early in the morning, but it was very well worth it to be in attendance to that. They, one of the students started asking a question in his native language, I think the mayoral penitents all turned very pale in that particular language, but they all did a really good job. It's just to them.
Since the board meeting, so we've had a lot of activities. I found out that we have, not only at Whites Creek, but there are four high schools that have courtrooms in our schools. And in these courtrooms, they try real truancy cases with... The students serve as officers of the court in all roles except judge. And I personally love the way we're integrating our community into our schools. The students at Whites Creek are... Example is... And I also saw solar panels that were used to generate electricity for their go-karts. And it's, as Anna Shepherd said, Ms. Shepherd, I... Student Ambassador White House at Dupont Hadley. To hear the band and the courts and see activities in middle school such as... How to work and appreciate each other. Today's Club Day, so we got to see the students playing with the Vanderbilt Bridge Club, which was blended learning projects. We saw the, the student-based learning, the project-based learning, different projects outlined in the hall. The middle schools that we have in Metro are amazing, and parents, if you have a rising fifth grader, don't listen to what some may say. Get out and go into the school, observe the schools, and make your own decision about the learning that's taking place in our schools. Also had the privilege to witness student-led conferences at Neely Spin Middle, which I was very impressed with, with 200 folks attending. Maplewood Monday was this week, and I have gotten to a point where I just cannot stand to miss one because I always miss something important. The students shared innovation relating to student teaching and involvement in the entrepreneurial program. It's project-based learning at its best. And you may know that in New York City, or at least... Of like 21 high schools that are doing project-based learning, and it's so good that they don't even take achievement tests anymore. And that is, there's another program in Danville, Kentucky, that I think are middle school students. So this learning is, is so important because it's meaningful to students, and that's when we learn the most. NASA is preparing to send humans to Mars in 2024, and at Maplewood, the Maplewood Martians are preparing, they've got, they've made, formed different hypotheses, and they've been testing those hypotheses, and they are, they've been Skyped with a NASA scientist. Now, opportunities to go into the schools and help judge these projects, project-based learning projects. And Todd Whittington is asking for community volunteers as they host two days, Tuesday, May 12th for elementary school, and May 13th for middle school. If you're interested in participating and listening to students present information about their projects, please contact Todd Whittington.
Thank you. Dr. Brennan?
Yes, I just have to say how proud I was of the Overton...
I just have to say how proud I was of the Overton students, they carried out the mayoral forum on Friday. It was a project-based learning exercise, and they did a great job. Also, we return to Overton tomorrow for the schools address, about 10:00.
Yes. Like 50 people, he gives a... This man from Cambridge Elementary School, George... Joshua Henderson from Anheal High School received a relationship with students. And as well, I would like to congratulate Dr. Adrian Colver, the executive principal at Anheal High School, who received a major award from the University of Tennessee, which is called the prestigious William J. and Lucille H. Field Award. In addition to that, the National Black Association of Speech, Language, and Hearing is holding their annual convention here in Nashville, Tennessee. And they've identified Jared Baxter Middle School as a recipient to receive, they're asking all of the participants to donate a $10 gift card for the students at Jared Baxter, as well as... That is... That was a lot. Okay. So I just want to give an update on the, well, director's meeting on this Thursday, 11:30. Lunch will be provided. I will bring to that meeting the numbers of, from HYA, of attendees to the stakeholder meetings that have happened so far this week. I know they've got two more to do tonight alone, and then they'll go into two more days of it. As I said before, we will make a decision based on those numbers, whether we need to put in some more sessions, extend that time to ensure that we're getting adequate feedback, or at least that we've had representation from those... In these listening sessions. The committee on the committee that's listed, then other directors report per our discussion during the planning meeting. But one of the things I would like to ask is, if we can just get the dashboard deployed as it is today. I know that you've asked us for feedback. Apparently, we've not given the feedback that was necessary to make any changes. I know we've got a lot going on. So if we can deploy the dashboard as it exists, just if it's, because I think right now it's really just giving stats per school, and then give us something real time to react to. Once that gets deployed, we'll send out a note, again, asking you all for feedback on what we would like to see adjusted and modified in the dashboard. But as of now, I know that they've been waiting on us, so we have actually been the holdup in that process. We'll get it deployed, and if necessary, we'll get a little demo on how to access it, so on and so forth. I don't think anything has changed from the last time they came around and gave us one. I know we have some new members at the table since that first happened. I don't think you were here. All right. And that's all I have. Ms. Row.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.